Meeting in a Hammond City Council order on Monday or Tuesday, October 11.
To the life of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, for a nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Eternal God, our Father, Lord God, we come again saying thank you, Lord God. Lord God, we thank you for this day that you have made. Lord, we just ask that you continue to cover our residents, Lord God. Lord, continue to cover this council as we continue to do your will. Lord, we thank you for everything that you're doing in this season. In Jesus' name, amen.
Clerk Golick, roll call.
Alexander.
Present.
Spitali.
Here.
Vines.
Here.
Galwinski.
Here.
Torres.
Here.
Taylor.
Here.
Emerson.
Here.
Rakels.
Here.
Whorple.
Here. Let the record show nine present, zero absent, eight in chambers, one by Zoom. Phil?
Good evening, Mr. President and Council. Mayor McDermott asked me to give his report as he's out of town. Let's start with some good news. As of last week, the Bank Kayamet Project, or Northwest Indiana Development Project, has officially started. They are, they've started the interior demolition and abatement of what eventually will be a $30 million, 104-unit apartment building that'll have some commercial and communal space on the, on the ground floor. I think if I gave this report in the past, it was probably less than $30 million. But as all of you are aware, costs have changed these days. So the project cost for theirs has gone up. And, you know, not that it's necessarily important to the council, but they did have to go back to the Indiana Economic Development Corporation downstate, ask for additional dollars, and the IEDC did say yes for that because they understand how important this project is, not only for Hammond, but also with the train project that's going on. This is going to be one of the first projects that's going to come to fruition and really show off what we're going to be able to do in downtown with that train having an eventual station right there. So we're excited about that. Hopefully, it's one of several, and we'll be hearing about one or two others that'll be starting in the near future. Let's talk quickly about some of the agenda items. I know we have a lot on the agenda, so I'll be relatively short. We have some different rezone and intends to consider for the YMCA and Hudamaki Projects. For those that don't recall, the YMCA, again, used to be a little less expensive, but now is about a $70 million project. You may not be aware that when it's completed, it will be the largest YMCA in the country, overtaking the Crown Point YMCA, which currently is the largest. I don't think a lot of people are aware of that. The, the items that are on the agenda obviously support this project. I know we talked a little bit about it in caucus. One thing that, that we didn't hit on is that we are working with NDOT on a new traffic signal into the, what I'll call the old Woodmar Mall development. Obviously, with the increased traffic, with some of the things that are being proposed at the Walmart, which is currently, I don't, it's not vacant because you do have North Shore Health, and I believe there's a store in there. But there's bigger things in store for that building as well. And then, you know, we still are talking about ideas at the Sportsplex also. So we know there's going to be increased traffic. We know there's increased parking needs. And one of the things that I, I think is, that we're lucky on is that the owner of the Walmart and his group have agreed to have shared parking agreements with everybody. So although you might think to yourself, well, if we're going to have this extremely large YMCA, where's all the parking going to be? I believe there's somewhere between 500 and 600 spots at, at the Walmart site, most of which are not utilized, so that, that's going to be able to be used as well. And then from a city perspective, we're looking at the property we own right behind the Walmart, which would be just south of Walmart, and also the property we own right behind the Food for Less, which is also south of the Food for Less, and potentially are going to make parking in those areas as well. So in the end, there's going to be a, a lot of additional parking. I think that's a question I get a lot when we're talking about this particular project. But it's exciting for Hammond. I've talked to many people in Crown Point and what the YMCA has done there. I'm talking about development around the YMCA, what it's done for their community, and I think it's, it's going to do the same thing for Hammond. I, I would imagine that residential prices in the area are going to eventually go up with some of this increased development. And then, of course, Hudamaki across the street is doing 100-plus million expansion, adding jobs, cleaning up their facility, built, constructing a new building, demolishing one that we probably would have hoped would have been demolished a long time ago, the old Pizza Hut building that's been there forever. So there's just a lot of good things happening in this area. We just have to work together with everybody to make sure it's as cohesive and functional as possible from a city perspective. Lastly, this evening, we are introducing the budget. I know you're all very aware of that. I've had conversations with many of you, maybe not all, but many of you in, in regards to the budget. Megan Flores, and, and I should mention condolences to Megan and her family, obviously for the unexpected death of her fiance's father. So our condolences, Megan. Is, is making herself available to all of you. I believe she's reached out to the council office and said, if you need a meeting, call me, let's discuss, ask me questions. I believe she just met with Councilwoman Alexander, which is great. And I hope all the rest of you are taking advantage of that. If, if you'd like to speak with me at any of the meetings, I'm happy to. Although when it comes to the budget, obviously Megan is the expert. It's tough times. It has been, not just in Hammond, but in this country over the last, you know, since 2020. So the budget is what it is. We're doing the best we can. I think the city has, has done well as far as making sure all our departments have been functional through all the issues that we've gone through, the pandemic and everything else, labor shortages that are out there. I think we're doing a pretty good job trying to curtail some of that. So, but, you know, we're happy to present the budget to you. You know, Megan and her team, as you can see, she has some of her team here as well, Tanisha and Jessica, have met with every department head in the city and talked about where are their opportunities to potentially cut a position, combine positions, where you can save money on the budget. Sometimes there's, there's a department saying, look, we need to add a position here because of certain circumstances. But I think in the end, they do the best they can to, to present to you the most efficient budget possible. So when you meet with her, I hope you find that. I don't know if Mayor, I might have missed if Mayor talked about this at a previous meeting, but, you know, we recently had a bond rating. I don't know if he spoke about that, and our outlook actually moved up. It actually went in the right direction, which is very positive. We're excited about that. It shows that decisions, not just the administration, but that you as the council have been making are, have been good ones, specifically when we talk about the rainy day fund. And I think the, the way we have run the capital improvement board and are spending money after we receive it as opposed to spending it ahead of time and, and hoping that it comes in. So I just want to bring that up as well. That's positive for the city of Hammond. But that's all I have, and I'm happy to answer any questions. Yes?
Ms. Kowinski.
Phil, you mentioned that the IEDC or IEDOC was going to give more to the Bank Kayamet. How much more are they giving?
I know it's at least 2 million. It may not be that exact number, but it's at least 2. So I'll say 2-plus million.
And it was 15 million originally, was that?
That the IEDC was contributing? No. So I think the whole project, you know, initially when we went, when they came forward, and again, I'm going by memory here. I believe they were asking, the entire project was about 25 million. I believe the city stepped up with an incentive to the tune of around 5 million. It might be a little less than that. And the, and the IEDC matched our incentive. So it was probably around 5 million as well. The IEDC has a, I don't know if it's official rule or a guideline that they won't incentivize a project unless they know it's being incentivized locally for the same amount. So a lot of times when we come to you and ask for an incentive, and we know that they're approaching the IEDC, that's part of what we'll, you know, we'll explain that part of the picture to you. So I would say at this point, they're probably in the $7 million range. You're welcome.
Any others?
Hey Phil, the, I know the early out period closed. How many took that offer of the early out? Are you aware of that yet?
Although I don't have the number off the top of my head, I'll bet you Megan does. Yeah, I'm glad you brought that up. It's, obviously, we offered the early retirement to people that qualify under certain conditions. From my perspective, it's been pretty successful as far as the folks that are taking it. Obviously, they're excited because they've been with us for a very long time, and they're getting a little extra reward for all the hard work and what they've done for the city. And then from our perspective, you know, people are leaving that potentially have a lot more vacation, a lot more benefits, a lot more vacation days, sick days. So it actually in the end could save the city money as well. I'll ask Megan if she has that number. 21 people have signed up for the early retirement. Thank you, Megan.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number four, approval of minutes.
The President.
Councilman Spitali.
The motion to accept the minutes from September 26, 2022 and be placed on file, please.
Second. Motion's been made by Councilman Spitali, seconded by Councilman Emerson. Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Clerk Golick, roll call.
Alexander.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Galwinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Rakels.
Yes.
Whorple.
Yes. Let the record show nine in favor, zero opposed. Item number four. I'm sorry, item number five, approval of all claims.
Mr. President.
Mr. President.
Oh, okay, go ahead.
Councilman Rakels.
I'm sorry.
I'll, I'll give it a shot. Not here. It's okay. Make motion to pay claims, beginning with claims dated number nine, dated 9/29/2022, and ending with claims dated 10/5/2022. Claim number 53, 58, 53, that's 5853, through claim number 6170, in the amount of $90,317,439.43.
Second.
Motion's been made by Councilman Rakels, seconded by Councilwoman Vines. Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Clerk Golick, roll call.
Alexander.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Galwinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Rakels.
Yes.
Whorple.
Yes. Let the record show the claims passed, nine in favor, zero opposed. Item number six, public hearings.
Item eight, ordinance 22-39 sponsored by Councilman Tyler and ordinance reclassifying certain lands in the city of Hammond for zoning purposes and amending ordinance number 8514 and ordinance establishing a zoning plan for the city of Hammond, including the regulations and maps to administer the zoning plan in order to provide for orderly growth and development within the city, all in accordance with the comprehensive land use plan as amended for property commonly known as 1918, 1940, 165th Street in Hammond. Item B. Ordinance 22-40 sponsored by Councilman Tyler and ordinance reclassifying certain lands in the city of Hammond for zoning purposes and amending ordinance number 8514 and ordinance establishing a zoning plan for the city of Hammond, including the regulations and maps to administer the zoning plan in order to provide for orderly growth and development within the city, all in accordance with the comprehensive land use plan as amended for property commonly known as 6539 Indianapolis Boulevard. Item C. Ordinance 22-41 sponsored by Councilman Tyler and ordinance amending ordinance number 9378, which is an amendment to ordinance 8514 to amend the Hammond Sportsplex Plan Unit Development District as a supplement to the zoning ordinance for property at 6600 Indianapolis Boulevard and 1918 through 1940, 165th Street. Item D. Ordinance 22-42 sponsored by Mayor McDermott, the city of Hammond 2023 budget proposal. Item E. 22-43 sponsored by Councilman Spitali and Councilwoman Vines, the 2023 budget proposal for the Hammond Redevelopment Commission. Item F. Ordinance number 22-44 sponsored by Councilwoman Vines and Councilman Torres, the 2023 budget proposal for the sanitary district of Hammond, including sewer maintenance fund 608, also known as 8201, and the special sanitary debt service fund 309, also known as 8280.
Does anyone wish to speak on any of these issues, for or against?
George Storey of Robertsdale. The last meeting, the mayor mentioned this thing about the sanitary district and the spiking costs that we're going to be seeing. Has there any sort of a cost of service study been published for the fair citizens of Hammond? Or anything like that to compare it and how it, how it works with the budget and how it works with this debt, extra debt we're going to undertake soon? I'm completely in the dark about this. I assume many others are. And yet our bills are going to, our bills are going to reflect a pretty steep spike, I'm told. So is there anything that can be done? I've heard no discussion about this unless, of course, like usual, you guys talk amongst yourselves. But I mean, in public. Anything? Otherwise, I don't know what's going on.
You guys want to address it? Anybody want to address that?
Marty Wilgus, Hammond Sanitary District. The sanitary district for the last, since 1996, has been working with the federal government, putting a consent decree order together. This is happening across the country. And what the federal government wants from sanitary districts across the country is upgrades to modern-day standards. The old ways of treating sewage back 40, 50, 60 years ago just doesn't make sense anymore. They're not efficient, they're old, and they're not working. So over the last 10 years that I've been involved, we finally finished wrapping up an agreement with the federal government on the long-term control plan. And basically, what the mayor alluded to several meetings ago was the number that we've agreed to do over the next 28 years, close to $250 million of improvements. The good thing is that I've not had to come to this council to ask for a rate increase since the last one we did over seven years ago. And the reason why I've not had to do that is because of the fact that we run the sanitary district more efficiently than it's been in the past. We've utilized different changes in operations that have actually saved us money. And those cost savings and reductions have allowed me and my staff to do improvements against this $250 million over the last 10 years. It's amazing, and when you look at different things, that we always think, well, in order to get something done, it's going to cost more money. And, and the sanitary district is rate-based. That's how we fund the district to provide the services that we do. It's my job, along with the business manager, Rachel, to make sure we spend those monies wisely and prudently. The worst thing that I could do is to continually come to this council to ask for more money when I haven't cleaned our house and put everything in order. One of the main things of cleaning the house at the Hammond Sanitary District was addressing our customer communities. And I wanted to do that so that we were able to get a rate that we thought was fair and equitable compared to the citizens of Hammond, that what they were paying, along with the residents of Munster. Because as you know, Munster has one member of my board. We've done that. We did a rate study for our customer communities. And at the end of that study, which just recently had been finished, we found out that our customer communities, as I have thought for a long, long time, were not paying their fair share. So getting our house in order was to, first of all, get our customer communities in order, which took a long time because they also had long-term contracts, 25 years, 30 years, that had clauses in those contracts when they were originally drawn up back in the early 90s with automatic renewals. It is what it is, right? Can't go back and change things. I've learned long ago, you deal with the cards that are given to you the best way you can. And we've done that, not always easily, and for most of the time, very painstakingly. We had to go through the courts with our customer communities. It ended up going all the way down, if you remember, many years ago, five, six years ago, to the Indiana Supreme Court. And what they told us is that, Hammond, you have contracts with these communities. You have to abide by them. We thought that we could get lucky, but you know what? Luck actually turned in our favor because it put the conversation at the top of discussion with our customer communities. And because of that, and because working with the federal government on our long-term control plan, it has all come together to the fact that we got a rate study done, that our customer communities agree to be bound by, and it proved that they are underpaying. So as I'm speaking right now, we are working with finalizing the agreements with our three customer communities, Whiting, Highland, and Griffith. Those are the three customer communities that Hammond Sanitary District has. And I can assure you that once we get those agreements in place, I should not have to come to you to ask for rate increases to do the commitment of the $250 million. Not tomorrow, not next year, not two years from now because of the fact of how we put our house in order and because of the fact that I knew we were being underpaid. And we're talking large amounts of money. So to answer the question, and hopefully I did, and I'll open it up for any questions that you may have of me, that's exactly what we've done. We prepared for the future. We've learned what we needed to do, and we have been doing it ahead of time. We didn't wait to start addressing that $250 million. I can tell you right now, four projects that the sanitary district just finished, and of which we're waiting to, you know, probably early next year to have all of you come down and take a tour of what additions we've made. We did a $14 million addition to Headworks. It's the main building that was the original building that sat on Columbia Avenue, the one that you go past every day. That building had a $14 million improvements. 99% of that was electronic-based. Imagine the cost efficiencies we're going to have just with that. New equipment and the things that we needed that were long overdue. All of those expenditures go towards knocking that 250 down, knocking it down, knocking it down. So we're actually ahead of the game because we knew it was coming, and I'm not one to wait. Nor am I one to come and have to ask you for rate increases, which eventually happened. I mean, I can tell you over not only the sanitary district, but the entire city, everyone's in, in, you know, eating up new costs. My chlorine costs have quadrupled in a year and a half. And we pay our bills on time. We're lucky to have a little bit of money as our rainy day fund set aside at the district. We're prepared. I'll answer any questions that you may have. Councilman?
Councilman Kowinski.
Do you have four projects that you've completed? And are you able to take the amount of all those four projects and apply it to the $250 million?
The answer is yes.
So do you have a number?
I don't have an exact number, but I can tell you that, you know, 14 million, almost all of that, is going to knock down from that 250. We did some new clarifiers at about $7 million in the plant. We added two of those. That's going to come off almost 100% from the 250. So we're, we're chipping away at it. But I'm also with the environment that we're in today, with what COVID has changed as far as costs, from keeping good employees to just the basic operations of the district. I'm very frugal on where we spend our dollars, more frugal than I've probably been in the past. But I'm not one to stick my head in the sand and let maintenance go unappreciated. It has to be done, just like the water department. They have to do the things in those drying beds that I will call them because of the fact that if they don't, imagine what chaos you will have. They're addressing those costs, councilmen, that are skyrocketing, just like the city is. Because when our cost analysis people come in for a project, like I do at the district, the number's a floating number anymore because you just don't know where the materials are or how long it's going to take you to get them. We're doing more long-range planning now than I've ever seen us doing because of that fact. Because we know somewhere down the line, some of these numbers are going to have to come back down. But it's a guessing game. So like the city, like the sanitary district, like the water department, we have to do what we have to do because if we don't do what we have to do, our services could come to a stop. And you can imagine the chaos that would cause on a city, either water or sanitary. It's just can't, you can't wait.
Any other questions? Councilman Emerson.
The council, we, and I don't want to single anybody out, but we took a tour of the sanitary district, and it's very, it's awesome. I mean, where everything ends in Hammond is what I like to say. But, so I, I wondered, loosely related to, to the discussion, the EPA had said we need to have stormwater districts, and one of them's in the fourth district. And I wondered if you could elaborate on that because that's what they said. No, they said, well, you don't have to, but you can pay a million dollars a year. That's, that was one number that was thrown around, and that, that's probably going up. So I guess we have to eventually. So could you elaborate on that?
You know, there, there was a major push for many, many years for separation, right? Separate stormwater from the wastewater. Because the thought was, well, the stormwater doesn't have all the contaminants in it as the wastewater. So the stormwater doesn't really need to be treated and doesn't need to have all of that process like the wastewater does. We can just send it to the streams of the United States. Well, what has happened is reality is set again, and the thought now is starting to change whereby the stormwater has a lot of contaminants in it. Think about it, all of the runoff of every major road, gasoline, salt, and the oil products. Imagine us not treating that, going directly into the waterways. So some of the thought is, is that almost everything is going to have to be treated again. And we're preparing for that and preparing the district to accommodate that. On any given day at the Hammond Sanitary District, 33 million gallons come into that plant every single day. When we get a little bit of rain, that can jump up within minutes to 45 million. And we treat it, or we store it in the basin, to wait till the rain stops and then bleed it back in to treat it. So we're not putting raw sewage, stormwater into the river. Look at, I mean, I grew up here like many of you have, and there used to be the skull and there used to be the skull and bone signs on the Grand Calumet River. You would look at it, not even want to spend any more time looking at it off the bridge. It was full of garbage, debris, tires, you name it. And those signs were everywhere. Look at it today. Look at how things have changed, and we're doing the right things to bring the environment back to where it should be. I can only tell you that there's more live animals on our 24-acre site than I've ever seen before. Fox, wild turkeys, imagine it, along the Grand Calumet River in our plant. Deer, you name it. The water life, fish have come back. The geese, the ducks. I mean, it truly is amazing, the turnaround from the last 25 years. And I can only tell you, we welcome that. I know it's expensive sometimes, but you know, it's doing the right thing for the generations to come after we are all long gone. And I think we have a dire need to continue on that path. So my job is, and I know anytime I come before you, I see everybody start squirming a little bit because, Marty's here, he needs money. And the thing is, I'm happy to come here at times like this to discuss the fact, I don't need money today, I don't need money tomorrow because of all the things that we've done internally. And it's because I have a great staff. We have really good, strong, committed people. And I'm just happy to be the guy that's running this facility for now, doing the things I need to do so that when the guy that comes after me, or the lady that comes after me, they can say, hey, we're going to continue with the efforts of not only the past, but farther past of those people who brought the district and accepted the responsibilities of keeping our waters clean. You got to remember, one last thing in closing. In California, because of their water shortage, and I'm going to predict soon to be in Arizona, they take the affluent, is what I end up with, and put back into the Grand Calumet River, which goes right back to Lake Michigan. Instead of them putting their affluent into a waterway, they send it back to the filtration plant so that it could be reprocessed and sent to your drinking water. I told the mayor, I said, I would challenge him to a test. We'll go down to where our outfall is into the river. I'll take a glass, he'll take a glass. I'll pour his glass, and I'll have one of my guys give me my glass, and we'll drink together. That's how clean it is. Our affluent has stronger guidelines on it than your potable water. We have to meet higher standards because it's going back into the river than the water that's pulled out that the Hammond Filtration Plant processes that becomes your potable water. Any other questions? Mr. President?
Not if nobody else has any.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody else wish to speak on any of these issues? Does anybody else wish to speak on any of these issues for public hearing? Does anybody else wish to speak? Hearing none, public hearings are now closed. Item number seven, communications. Does anybody have any communications? Does anybody have any communications? Hearing no communications, communications are now closed. Item number eight, committee reports.
Mr. President?
Councilwoman Vanez.
Yes, council as a whole will be bringing out 2237 and 2238.
Thank you.
Mr. President?
Councilman Tyler.
Council as a whole will also be bringing out 2239, 2240, and 2241.
Mr. President?
Councilwoman Vanez.
Yes, and I'd like to give a report on the Capital Improvements Board. I do not have a report this week. We did not meet on October 3rd. The meeting was canceled. And the next meeting will be October 17th. Generally, it's at 4:30 PM, the work-study session, followed by the meeting at 5 PM. Following up with the Community and Crime Watch meetings. Community Watch at Mount Zion Pleasant View Plaza will meet tomorrow, Wednesday, October 12th, at 1 PM. The East Hammond Pullman Crime Watch will meet at 6 PM on Tuesday, October 18th, at the Ophelia Steen Center. Hessville Crime Watch will meet Thursday, October 20th, 6 PM, at the Jean Shepherd Center. The South Holman Avenue Neighborhood Watch will meet Thursday, October 13th, at Trinity Lutheran Church on 173rd and Holman. That begins at 6:30. And incidentally, this group only meets twice a year. So this is their final meeting for the year. And also, on Thursday, October 13th, 6:30 PM, is the Whiting-Robertsdale Crime Watch. They will meet at the Calumet College. This is a great opportunity for any of our residents to come out and find out what's going on in our city and incidents in your neighborhood. And gives you also an opportunity to speak to community policing officers at the meetings. This month is Fire Prevention Month, and firefighters have come to the meetings and given us safety tips. So it's very informational for all of our residents. And when we all work together, we can make our community safe because community is not just about me, it's about us. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Does anybody else have anything on the committee reports? I do have a question, even though it wasn't in committee, there's another ordinance coming out tonight too, correct? Do you read districting ordinance?
That was 2238. Did I not mention?
No, you did say that. I didn't know. I'm sorry, I didn't, it wasn't in the committee, so yeah.
Okay.
Is there any further discussion under committee reports? Any further discussion under committee reports? Hearing no further discussion, committee reports are now closed. Item number nine, ordinance is third, reading and final passage.
Ordinance number 22-37, sponsored by Councilwoman Vanez. And ordinance amending 99, chapter 99.65 of the Hammond Municipal Code pertaining to park traffic rules.
Mr. President?
Councilwoman Vanez.
Yes, I move to replace 2237 with 2237A.
We have to introduce 2237 first, and then, under discussion, amend it.
It was introduced last meeting. It accord, I, Carmen looked it up, it was in the minutes, that was my.
I need a motion to take out 2237, though, right?
First motion needs a second, and then it's amending replacement.
We have to introduce 2237, and then make a motion to, with a second, and then make a motion to amend it.
Okay, my mistake.
We need a second on the main motion.
So the main motion to.
First and second reading of 2237A. 2237, I'm sorry.
Second.
Motion's been made by Councilwoman Vanez, seconded by Councilwoman Alexander. Is there any discussion?
Yes, Mr. President. I move to replace 2237 with 2237A.
Second.
The motion's been made by Councilwoman Vanez, seconded by Councilwoman Alexander to amend 2237 with 2237A in its entirety. Is there any discussion on that?
Mr. President?
Councilwoman Vanez.
Yes, this ordinance is with regard to the prohibition of parking around parks. As it reads, "No person shall between dusk and dawn park a vehicle in or along any street or park street except those persons participating in programs approved by the city or Board of Park Commissioners. The hours may otherwise be restricted by police order, Board of Park Commissioners' resolution, or action by way of posting signage clearly indicating a restricted date and time." So that is this ordinance.
Is there any further discussion on the amendment? Is there any further discussion on the amendment?
Mr. President, just a point of clarification, this is for third and final passage, right?
Yes, it is.
Is there any further discussion on the amendment? Is there any further discussion on the amendment? I got to say this three times, so don't want to interrupt me. Is there any further discussion on the amendment? Clerk Golick, roll call on the amendment.
Alexander.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Vanez.
Yes.
Kowinski. Torres.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Yes.
Warple.
Yes, let the record, the amend, let the record show the amendment passes. Nine in favor, zero opposed. Is there any discussion on the amendment as, I mean, on the motion as amended? I think I got that right. Is there any further discussion on the amendment, on the ordinance as amendment? I said that once wrong, now I said it twice wrong. What I said the second time, is there any further discussion on the amendment? The ordinance as amended. Hearing that, Clerk Golick, roll call.
Alexander.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Vanez.
Yes.
Kowinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Raichos.
Yes.
Warple.
Yes, let the record show the motion carries nine in favor, zero opposed. I got accused of hot dogging it because that's what got me confused. Go ahead.
Ordinance 22-38, sponsored by Councilman Warple. And ordinance amending ordinance 7554, ordinance 8452, and ordinance 9168, as it pertains to councilmatic districts in second-class cities.
Mr. President?
Councilwoman Vanez.
I move for final passage of 2238.
Second.
Motion's been made by Councilwoman Vanez, seconded by Councilwoman Spitali. Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Clerk Golick, roll call.
Alexander.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Vanez.
Yes.
Kowinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Raichos.
Yes.
Warple.
Yes, let the record show, the motion carries nine in favor, zero opposed.
Ordinance 22-39, sponsored by Councilman Tyler. And ordinance reclassifying certain lands in the City of Hammond for zoning purposes, and amending ordinance number 8514. And ordinance establishing a zoning plan for the City of Hammond, including the regulations and maps to administer the zoning plan in order to provide for orderly growth and development within the city, all in accordance with the Comprehensive Land Use Plan, as amended for property commonly known as 1918 and 1940, 165th Street in Hammond.
Mr. President?
Councilman Tyler.
I move for third and final passage of ordinance 22-39.
Second.
Motion's been made by Councilman Tyler, seconded by Councilwoman Vanez. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President?
Councilman Tyler.
As we spoke about at last meeting, and of course, tonight during caucus, this purpose of this ordinance is just update the zoning for the area that will be added into addition of the new crossroads, YMCA, that will be built on the corner of 165th Indianapolis Boulevard. I don't know if we, I know we have representatives from the Y here, if we want to open it up for them to speak. If they have anything to share.
Is there any further discussion? Is there any further discussion? Is there any further discussion? Clerk Golick, roll call.
Alexander.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Vanez.
Yes.
Kowinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Raichos.
Yes.
Warple.
Yes, let the record show, the motion carries nine in favor, zero opposed.
Ordinance 22-40, sponsored by Councilman Tyler. And ordinance reclassifying certain lands in the City of Hammond for zoning purposes, and amending ordinance number 8514, which is an ordinance establishing a zoning plan for the City of Hammond, including the regulations and maps to administer the zoning plan in order to provide for orderly growth and development within the city, all in accordance with the Comprehensive Land Use Plan, as amended for property commonly known as 6539 Indianapolis Boulevard.
Mr. President?
Councilman Tyler.
I move for third and final passage of ordinance 22-40.
Second.
Motion's been made by Councilman Tyler, seconded by Councilwoman Vanez. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President?
Councilman Tyler.
Once again, this is connected to the expansion of Hootimaki, and will update the zoning of the new, additional parcel properties to include in that expansion. Thank you.
Is there any further discussion? Is there any further discussion? Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, Clerk Golick, roll call.
Alexander.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Vanez.
Yes.
Kowinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Raichos.
Yes.
Warple.
Yes, let the record show, nine in favor, zero opposed.
Ordinance 22-41, sponsored by Councilman Tyler. And ordinance amending number 9378, which is an amendment to ordinance 8514 to amend the Hammond Sportsplex Planned Unit Development District, ordinance as a supplement to the zoning ordinance for property at 6600 Indianapolis Boulevard and 1918 through 1940, 165th Street.
Mr. President?
Councilman Tyler.
I move to adopt ordinance 22-41 on third and final passage.
Second.
Motion's been made by Councilman Tyler, seconded by Councilwoman Spitali. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President?
Councilman Tyler.
Actually make, want to amend ordinance 22-41 with 22-41 in its entirety.
22-41 with 2241A?
Correct.
Yes. Motion's been made to amend 2241 with 2241A. Is there any discuss, I mean, is, I need a second on that, right? Motion's been made by Councilman Tyler, seconded by Councilwoman Vanez. Is there any discussion to amend the ordinance? Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Clerk Golick, roll call on the amendment.
Alexander.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Vanez.
Yes.
Kowinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Yes.
Warple.
Yes, let the record show, nine in favor, zero opposed. Is there any discussion on the amend, I mean, on the ordinance as amendment?
Mr. President?
Councilman Tyler.
This ordinance is just an update of the zoning. Uh, this ordinance is just an update of the zoning, uh, around the Sportsplex, um, and parcels of property connected to that, so that, um, we can update the PUD, which is the planned unit development, uh, for that area. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion? Is there any further discussion? Is there any further discussion? Clerk Golick, roll call on them.
Alexander.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Kalwinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Rakels.
Yes.
Warple.
Yes, let the record show the motion carries nine in favor, zero opposed.
President Warple, that concludes the ordinance- ordinances for final passage.
Thank you. Nothing like being jinxed on reading them ordinances for me. Item number ten, introduction of ordinances.
Item A, ordinance twenty-two dash forty-two, the City of Hammond twenty-twenty-three budget proposal sponsored by Mayor McDermott.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vines.
I move for first and second reading of twenty-two dash forty-two, uh, refer to council as a whole with a committee meeting on October twenty-fourth at four-thirty PM.
Second.
Motion's been made by Councilwoman Vines, seconded by Councilman Tyler. Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Clerk Golick, roll call.
Alexander.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Kalwinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Rakels.
Yes.
Warple.
Yes, let the record show the motion carries nine in favor, zero opposed.
Item B, ordinance twenty-two dash forty-three sponsored by Councilman Spitali and Councilwoman Vines, the two thousand twenty-three budget proposal for Hammond redevelopment.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vines.
I move for first and second reading of twenty-two forty-three, refer to council as a whole with a committee meeting on October twenty-fourth at four-thirty PM.
Second.
Motion's been made by Councilwoman Vines, seconded by Councilman Spitali. Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Clerk Golick, roll call.
Alexander.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Kalwinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Rakels.
Yes.
Warple.
Yes, let the record show the motion carries nine in favor, zero opposed.
Item C, ordinance twenty-two dash forty-four sponsored by Councilwoman Vines and Councilman Torres, the two thousand twenty-three budget proposal for the sanitary district of Hammond, including the sewer maintenance fund six oh eight, also known as eighty-two oh one, and the special sanitary debt service fund three oh nine, also known as eighty-two eighty.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vines.
I move for first and second reading of twenty-two forty-four, uh, refer to council as a whole with a committee meeting on October twenty-fourth at four-thirty PM.
Second.
Motion's been made by Councilwoman Vines, seconded by Councilman Spitali. Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Clerk Golick, roll call.
Alexander.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Kalwinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Rakels.
Yes.
Warple.
Yes, let the record show nine in favor, zero opposed.
Item D, ordinance number twenty-two dash forty-five sponsored by the, uh, by Mayor McDermott. And ordinance fixing the salaries and wages of all city officials and employees of the City of Hammond, Indiana, other than those fixed by statute or by ordinance heretofore enacted, and fixing the effective date thereof.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vines.
I move for first and second reading of twenty-two forty-five, refer to council as a whole with a committee meeting October twenty-fourth at four-thirty PM.
Second.
Motion's been made by Councilwoman Vines, seconded by Councilwoman Alexander. Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Clerk Golick, roll call.
Alexander.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Kalwinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Rakels.
Yes.
Warple.
Yes, let the record show nine in favor, zero opposed.
Item E, ordinance twenty-two dash forty-six sponsored by Mayor McDermott. And ordinance fixing the salaries and wages of all policemen and firemen of the City of Hammond, Indiana, other than those fixed by statute or by ordinance heretofore enacted, and fixing the effective date thereof.
Mr. President.
Councilman Rakels.
Make a motion to pass that first and second reading, twenty-two dash forty-six, with a committee meeting on ten twenty-four, uh, four-thirty, council as a whole.
Motion's been made by Councilman Rakels, seconded by Councilman Kalwinski. Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Clerk Golick, roll call.
Alexander.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Kalwinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Rakels.
Yes.
Warple.
Yes, let the record show nine in favor, zero opposed.
President Warple, that concludes the introduction of ordinances.
Thank you, Clerk Golick. Item number eleven, resolutions.
Item A, resolution twenty-two R dash fifteen sponsored by Councilman Rakels, a resolution of the City of Hammond, Indiana, approving the issuance of revenue bonds of the Waterworks District of the city.
Turn your mic on.
Mr. President.
What's that?
Got me now?
I got you now.
Make a motion, first time I have in the whole media. Make a motion to pass resolution twenty-two R fifteen.
Second.
Motion's been made for fin- or for adoption of twenty-two R fifteen by Councilman Rakels, seconded by Councilwoman Vines. Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Clerk Golick, roll call.
Alexander.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Kalwinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Rakels.
Yes.
Warple.
Yes, let the record show nine in favor, zero opposed.
President Warple, that concludes the reading of the resolutions.
Thank you, Clerk Golick. Item number twelve, new and unfinished business. The three intent to consider's go away because they were passed already, so does anybody else have anything on the new and unfinished business? Does anything, anybody have anything else on the new and unfinished business?
Mr. President.
Councilwoman, uh, Councilman Tyler, I'm sorry.
Uh, last week, I know several of us attended the unveiling of the renaming of the, or the dedication of the Black Box at Hammond Central, which is their theater, uh, in honor of the late Superintendent Dr. Walter Watkins. Just wanna congratulate his family, uh, on that accomplishment, on that achievement. He was somebody that dedicated his life to the children and families of the City of Hammond, uh, and he is dearly missed, but I know that, uh, his family was happy with the ceremony, with the dedication, and I encourage anybody, if you like the arts, to go visit Hammond Central and their Black Box, uh, their art department, or their theater department, we put in on several plays this fall. I know they, I think they just wrapped up Clue, they're planning to do, um, The Lion King later on, and I, there was one more I was mentioning, I forget, but you can check the Hammond Central website to see a full schedule of their plays for the rest of the year. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else have anything on the new and unfinished business?
Mr. President.
Councilman Emerson.
Uh, I was there, there too, and, uh, I knew Dr. Watkins, uh, my son and daughter attended, uh, Eggers Middle School, and he was principal there, and I've, I've known him for, for a long time, and, uh, I think it was a great tribute, uh, renaming, uh, the Black Box Theater in his honor, and, uh, enjoyed it. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody else have anything on the new and unfinished business?
Mr. President.
Councilman Rakels.
I meant to mention this during communications, but I want to thank everybody that came out for the HC3, uh, festival cleanup last Saturday. We had about thirty kids and about ten adults, and we got a lot done, and, uh, I want to thank everyone that came out. Thank you.
And for the record, what was throwing me off is, your voice comes out before your mouth moves on that thing. That's what was throwing me off.
I understand.
Okay. Does anybody else have anything on the new and unfinished business? Does anybody else have any-
Mr. President.
Did somebody say something?
Yeah.
Oh, Councilman Tyler.
Uh, the, I'm not sure if we've announced this before, but the Hammond FOP number fifty-one is hosting an event this Saturday called Cask and Smoke. Uh, it's at, uh, Eighteenth Street here in downtown Hammond. Uh, tickets are still on sale. I believe tickets cost seventy dollars, but the event is from five till ten PM. There'll be drinks and, and food, and it's a fundraiser for, uh, their holiday program where they give out baskets and items to, to families in need, and toys to families in need, uh, across the city. So just wanna encourage people to attend that, too. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody else have anything on the new and unfinished business? Does anybody else have anything on the new and unfinished business? Does anybody else have anything on the new and unfinished business? New and unfinished business is now closed. Public expression, Linda, if I screw this up, I'm going to sleep when I get home. You can't spell it out any better for me. Linda N.G. Yano. Did I get it?
It's just a hard G, like geese.
Geese.
But very good, very good.
I was close.
You're getting better, yeah. Uh, since you called my name so considerately, I had to come up here, but, um, I really don't have a lot to add. Um, I was gonna speak about the Cozeta Resolution, and, um, we had a very spirited discussion after we left, and the members of Cozeta wanna meet with the mayor, and they're just concerned that the resolution is gonna be delayed, but I assured them that it, it would be passed within the next two meetings, and so I hope that that really happens, so that my support and trust in this system works. And I also wanna say that, um, the Latino Resource Fair on Saturday was well-attended, and there were all kinds of, um, health groups, and there was, uh, a lot of, um, families with their kids, and it was really good, and I think we really, as a community, really need to look for more resources to help the Latino community as we head towards the holidays. And the fundraiser is good, and it's, I've done fundraisers for the Carmelite Home, and for children to have a gift, one gift sometimes means the world to them, um, but meals throughout the whole winter season, and coats, and hats, and gloves, all of these things are very important. So if there's any resolution that you might, or not a resolution, a practice, something that you can come up with, or if you can keep through the communications, tell us of other fundraising events to help the, um, lower-income folks, especially the undocumented, I would really welcome that. And lastly, because I really believe in it, I just wanna say I appreciate your being open to hearing Ken Rosick each meeting and talk about the dunes, and I really support it. I grew up just across the street from the dunes he's talking about, where Morton High School and Scott Middle School used to be, and I know that that really shaped me and my six siblings and all the other little kids. There were tons of kids in that, um, subdivision over there. So I wanna thank you for all your work. I'm exhausted from all my work, and last, um, this Friday at six o'clock, the Progressive Democrats of America is having an open house. We've had, like I mentioned last meeting, we've had a lot of people who have expressed interest in becoming political, especially with the Democratic Party, so many, it was like twenty or twenty-five, that were suspending our usual business meeting, and we're gonna have an open house, and if any of you could come to that, that would be awesome. Uh, we're gonna be talking about what we've done, what our priorities are in the future. I've invited a couple of the city council members to come and talk about, well, how can you work with the city council here in Hammond? What, what is it that you can, uh, learn from them and get them more engaged in the process? So we meet at the Purdue University Northwest Campus, we meet in the library building, but not in the library, 'cause we're gonna be noisy, and we meet in the cafeteria area. The cafeteria's closed at that time, there's hardly any students there, but we just take over some tables and chairs, and maybe you'll learn a little bit more about us, too. So I welcome you to come. We hope for a good turnout, but since it's new people, we have no idea how many of those will show up, but I'd like to extend an invitation. Thank you. Good night.
Thank you. Gary. I'm not even gonna try to say that last name. Gary D.
Yeah. Uh, I'll give you a question. Six, seven block of Alexander, and to come up here, I wanna especially thank Councilman Dave Warple, uh, council president. He's been doing wonderful for me and my neighbors cleaning up Nickel Plate Street and that area around me. So my neighbors really appreciate it, and do that, so making heck of improvement, big time, so, thank you much.
Thank you. George.
Uh, I wanna thank Marty for coming up and giving some explanation or overview, um, about, uh, some of the sanitary district's costs and stuff like that. My main concern is, since we came out of the IURC back in, I don't know if it was the winter of twenty-eighteen going into, into the, into the winter of twenty-nineteen, or whenever it was, one of those years, so, um, that you, the council, were to, so to speak, as I heard from one guy say, "We'll step in and protect ya." Gotta tell ya, I really don't feel protected, and I don't feel protected by you guys, not as well anyway as those customer cities. You know why? 'Cause they have a contract they can enforce. We, the citizens of Hammond, have nothing. You know, we can come to you, and if it's one of your pet projects, it's great, but if it ain't, ha, outta luck. The point is, we don't have a contract, and I don't see the due diligence out of you guys. I just don't, or if you do, maybe you're doing it. I don't hear it, I don't see it, I don't know what's going on, just hear these, these pronouncements on high, next, next up, uh, you know, twenty-two dash forty-five, done. Twenty-two dash forty-six, done. You know, I'm feeling vulnerable, 'cause you guys can come in here like the mayor did, and just announce, "Hey, we're gonna have rate increases, how do ya like that?" And what can we do about it? Nothing, 'cause you guys ain't doing nothing. I don't see the due diligence. doing nothing. I don't see the due diligence. Now, you can get mad at me, I don't care. I don't see it. You're supposed to, you said you would step in for the citizens, because Marty can talk about, other people at the whiting, I mean, at the whiting, at the water department, can talk about all the cost analysis you want, but they're never challenged. See, one thing about litigation, one thing, you, you looked at the litigation, went through all the, all the motions and all that stuff, and you watched it, the, the reason that everything came out pretty good, because things were challenged. Reality came home. Just, you know, because, you know, Marty says, for example, I'm not picking on Marty, you know, I think, I think he said what he said in good faith, and I don't necessarily doubt your good faith. I just, I'm talking about due diligence, it's a different thing. But he can come up there and say, oh, we did a cost analysis. Well, great. You know, the I U R C would say, let's see your cost analysis, and they would challenge it, bit by bit, but we're not getting that here. Oh, no, not by a long shot. That's my problem. I feel vulnerable.
Thank you, George.
You bet.
Greetings, Mr. President, councilwomen and men. First, I'd like to make an announcement that our third annual Hessville Dune Dusters Meet and Cleanup will be October 22nd at 10 to 2 PM. Uh, we meet behind the Water Tower on Parish Avenue, and, uh, we're looking for volunteers this time from the 171st Street area, over by Kentucky, Montana, Maryland, those streets over there. We're going to be cleaning up that area on the east portion of the woods that's been neglected. We're going to go in there, clean it up, and try to restore it so it looks really nice for people, so it looks like an asset, and, uh, certain people don't consider it nicer. We want it to look beautiful in there so people will see a lovely woods going by. Um, tonight I want to speak about the city survey that was presented to us, kind of in lieu of a public vetting, um, and the city survey that was put out to us was biased, manipulative in its content, and gerrymandered in its distribution. Its intent was not to find out what residents were thinking, but created a tool that could be used to misdirect people and use the results as justification for the project, the bridge project. This is it, right here, the, the front page of the, uh, of the, uh, survey that we received. And at first glance, everything looks wonderful. We have our dune woodlands with what looks like a bicycle path that goes through them. Um, doesn't look like a road that you would normally see going through the woods, or that would accompany, uh, two lanes of traffic. Please note also here that they cut off the grand crossing, which is where all the harms that the city has listed to the Indiana Department of Transportation. On the, you might not notice that, but it was noticed by people in, in Hessville. It took us over two years to get, to see where they were actually going to put the bridge. We had no idea. People thought it was going to be on Parish, because they called it the Parish Avenue Bridge Project, and it's nowhere near Parish. It's three blocks away. This here is a map. A cha, uh, uh, we got this from the Indiana Department of Transportation and Department of Fish and Wildlife. Uh, this is the demolition map that the city requests. If you look carefully on it, on this map, just about the entire dune woodlands are completely destroyed in the first phase of the project, just building the, uh, the The last piece of information I want to show you is what we got from a FOIA request. This is their ultimate goal, total development of the entire woodlands. This was not meant to be seen by the public. We got it, like I said, through a FOIA request. 68 lots and two apartment buildings on this design. Now, were the Hessville residents treated equal and fairly when they got this, when this is the actual city's plan? I don't think so. I think we were misled. I think this was a fairy tale, okay? Um, going into the survey a little bit further, we see that, that the mayor had a letter to everyone. He basically explains how we can't solve the problem. It's impossible to stop the trains from parking. Speaks nothing to the different options available to solve the problem. Uh, you got a railroad crossing here that people see. It's very ominous, very dramatic. Um, on the bottom section, you have a railroad crossing with blocked traffic, of course. They centered this whole survey for just one thing, trains, trains, trains. They didn't go into any of the actual issues that are involved with our location. Um, on the, like you said, like I said, we, you have, um, trains here in a blocked traffic, but I can see right away it's not in Hessville. Because why? Because you have cars waiting for trains, and Hessville residents do not wait for parked trains. You wouldn't see cars waiting for these trains if this was Hessville. They could have at least gotten a picture from Hessville. The survey was, had 5,000 surveys went out, only 540 came back completed. That's a 10.4% response rate, which is terrible. Um, 440, 500, uh, surveys seemed to vanish. Nobody filled them out. They didn't know where they came from. My next door neighbor got six surveys. I got two. Numerous people got none. The boundaries excluded all the schools and all the 2020 flood victims. The mayor said he wished he could have used or, or have included his house, since he felt he was influenced by the bridge project also. This was an attempt to minimize, minimize or equate with what people who live right at ground zero were being excluded. I'd like to look, go down, because I'm getting the notion to, uh, finish up really quickly. Some of the answers that were, uh, questions that were asked, number five, uh, was the only question that actually dealt with any issues at hand. The proposed pathway, not street, to the bridge is through the undisturbed wooded areas, sometimes referred to as Briar East Woods, that result in hundreds of trees being cut down and habitat disturbed, destroyed. Knowing this, how strongly are you in favor of the bridge being built? Their full rate of fully approval, or, uh, people who fully approved, went down to 48%. The mayor asked if the survey, he had...
Mr. Rosick, I'm going to go six minutes now.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Can you wrap it up real quick?
Yes. I'll finish my com, uh, comments on the city survey later on in the next session. Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you for letting me speak. Um, just want to thank everybody for coming out to our HUGS Cultural Committee Parade on September 25th. It was a great success. If it wasn't for everybody's collaboration here, the mayor, and the city, and the workers, it would not have been possible. Purdue counted over 1,500 people at their festival, and I would also like to say thank you for all the help, and I would also like to invite you guys to another fundraiser coming to Hammond. It's at the Hammond Moose Lodge. They're going to have a breakfast from 9:00 in the morning to 3:00 in the afternoon for the People's Turkey Drive. They raise money to give out dinners and Thanksgiving. Uh, last time we had it, two years ago in Hessville, they reached 900 families. So the more that we get to, they get to donate, the more families they get to help out this year. They're expecting to get over 1,000 families. So it's really important if you guys could help them out. That organization is called the People's Turkey Drive, and it's going to be on October 30th. And, um, one quick personal, uh, thing from, um, the, the license, the driver's license issuance. I ran into a young lady at a Latino Resource Fair where, um, she was, uh, held back from receiving the college bound. She had to join the military in order to get her college paid. If her mom would have had some type of ID like that, she would have got the home exemption and was, would be able to receive the college bound for her, um, to further continue her education. So that's how important this ordinance is, not just for people to drive, but I think it also motivates them to have the insurance and do the proper taxes, because that's why a lot of times, a lot of the schools, you see a lot of Illinois driver's license, and that's people that do not have a license in Indiana that go to Illinois to get their driver's license, because they don't want to be arrested if they get pulled over. So that's just a couple of the things. I could have more information when you guys do your committee meeting. I'll be gladly to come and join, just to let you guys know how effective this was be, and how much it will help the citizens of Hammond. They told their parents in the state that they wouldn't be listened to because they don't vote. But guess what? They have children that vote now, grandchildren, you know, parents or anybody else that could vote for them, and they have a voice, and I'm one of their voices, and I'm proud of it, because when my mom came, she went through that same issue. So just to let you guys know, it goes more than just driving. It could be somebody's career, somebody's life, you know, somebody that we could be reading about 30 years from now, and you could be like, wow, I made that change for them. I made that for them to happen. So thank you, have a good evening, and enjoy your day. Thank you.
Thank you. I want to entertain a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Clerk Golick will call.
Alexander.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Lenzan.
Yes.
Cal, uh, Kalwinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Rakos.
Yes.
Orpil.